Welcome, everyone, to the October 21 City Council Work Session. Our topic today is South Willamette Special Area Zoning. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And before I turn it over to Robin and Terry and their team, I thought I'd just read the note that I sent to the council yesterday afternoon. It says, "We have heard the same testimony and read the same emails that you have from residents, and we understand that many people are concerned with how the proposed changes may affect their property and the livability of their neighborhood. Others have only recently become aware of some of the specific changes that are being proposed. We believe that some, but by no means all of the concerns are tied to a misunderstanding what land uses the proposed changes would actually allow, and we hope that this presentation today will begin to clarify some of that misunderstanding. In light of both the number of concerns expressed and the misunderstandings about the proposed changes, we believe that more time should be allowed before the council holds a public hearing on the proposed changes. Therefore, unless the council directs us otherwise today, we intend to postpone the public hearing until after the beginning of the new year. During this time, we plan to reach out to those people who have expressed concerns, and our dual goals will be to clarify misunderstandings and to see if we can find a way to address their concerns and still accomplish the Envision Eugene-related goals that have been the basis for the development of the South Willamette Special Area Zone. We also intend to touch base with the Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission has devoted a significant amount of time reviewing the proposed changes, considering testimony, and developing the recommendation. Much of the recent communication from residents has occurred since the Planning Commission had developed their recommendation, so we would like to loop back to the Planning Commission after we have further engaged with residents and determined what types of revisions might be good to make in the proposal before the council takes any action on the current proposal." And so with that, I'll turn it over to Robin and Terry.
Thank you, John. Actually, Terry is going to be kicking off the presentation and leading the first part, so I'll just pass it right along to her, and I will be jumping in sort of in the middle.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Councilors. I'm happy to be here to present information to you about the South Willamette Special Area Zone. I'm going to be talking about the proposal as it relates to Envision Eugene and citywide planning goals and directives, and then I'll pass it back to Robin to walk you through really the key elements of the proposal. He'll show you a lot of graphics in detail about what the code does and how it works. And then Bill Randall will wrap up with a few words about the recent planning commission process, and we'll have plenty of time for your questions and discussion. As you all know, we're engaged in creating a 20-year vision and plan through Envision Eugene. The community vision map here illustrates the key concepts for growth management for our city for the next 20 years. And the one I'd like to call your attention to is the strategy to focus our multifamily and commercial development inside the current boundary by increasing development along key corridors and near core commercial areas. By doing this, we'll continue Eugene's compact and livable form and transform low-intensity land uses along our major streets into vibrant mixed-use neighborhoods over time. Planning for our key corridors is proposed to occur through collaborative process of area planning, where staff really goes out to the community and asks for help, how do we balance the pillars in this location? Each corridor is likely to support the development of a few hundred multifamily homes that, taken together, provide our city with a feasible strategy for accommodating our multifamily needs over the next 20 years. If we choose not to implement area plans through projects like the South Willamette Area Zone, development can still happen under current regulations but without the street standard setbacks and design protections that the proposed code offers, and we'll get into those details in just a minute. Quick reminder about the seven pillars. Every planning project strives to balance these with one another, and the South Willamette Special Area Zone is no different. The pillars provide guidance to the planners and community members involved in this work to ensure a balanced and integrated approach to city policies and implementation actions. While early work on Envision Eugene was underway, the city was approached by the Friendly Area Neighbors and the South Town Business Association, whose members wanted to enhance the South Willamette area as a 20-minute neighborhood, a place where people have improved access to a variety of options for living, working, shopping, and doing business. The South Willamette area already has many of these pieces in place, but existing regulations fail to produce the kind of walkable neighborhood and compatible compact development envisioned by the community. So an area planning process was launched to look at land use, transportation, and urban design concepts with the community to figure out a plan and a way to implement it. The South Willamette Design Code has three main goals. They are to enhance the district as a walkable, living, working, and shopping area; to promote compatible design transitions from the corridor into the adjacent neighborhoods; and to promote compact development along a key corridor and near a core commercial area, serving most of the southern part of Eugene. The South Willamette process has included four major phases: the early visioning and concept plan development from 2010 through 2013; then, a full set of code concepts were developed, analyzed, and tested with the community from 2013 through 2014. The writing of the special area zone occurred from mid-2014 through early 2015 with public engagement throughout all of these phases, and we began the formal adoption process in April of this year. We know there's a lot of conversation, as the city manager just stated, about this project and the community. In addition to the five years of events and meetings leading up to the code, for which you have engagement summaries in your packet, there have been recent neighborhood meetings, multi-neighborhood forums, a city club program, articles and letters in the newspapers, and many people commenting on this plan at your public forums. City staff continue to meet with people, answer questions, attend meeting and events about the code. And recently, two of our staff that are here today, Will Doughty and Jennifer Knapp, were interviewed by the Friendly Area Neighbors, and a very lengthy transcript of that interview is on their website. We've also developed an extensive frequently asked questions document that we've posted in response to some of the misconceptions that have been out there, and we've developed a new map that shows the net change in allowable building heights, and that is also attached to your packet, and Robin will walk you through it in a moment. It's been a pretty effective tool to explain where decreases in height are proposed versus increases and the reasons why. We've been also meeting with neighborhood leaders and boards and interested groups and are in the process of planning additional meetings, so stay tuned for more information on that. Just a quick slide here about what is in the concept plan. It had three main goals: finding the balance among the seven pillars for Envision Eugene; to create an actionable plan that could be implemented in the short term; and to demonstrate a commitment to getting compact growth along a corridor done in a compatible way acceptable for Eugene. This is 2013. To implement the concept plan, it will take three main types of actions by the city. First, update regulations to align with the vision. We should do this before out-of-scale development that doesn't meet design expectations happens in the district. Second, enhance public infrastructure. We should do this to support the land uses and standards developed through Step One. And third, invest in certain types of development the community needs and wants to implement the vision. Do this after the code protections and infrastructure improvements are in place. Couple things we're not doing with the concept plan and its implementation: these documents don't force anyone to move or to develop their property. In addition, the city is not developing any properties itself. The role of the city really is for the code to develop rules for how the new development will occur, is required to occur, so that it will match the expectations laid out by the community in the vision. Existing uses can stay, for sure. Here's a brief look at some of the public engagement over the last few years. Following the completion of the concept plan, a variety of community events, stakeholder events, summer outreach, and a community workshop were held. We had a testing event, test drive, with the AIA, the American Institute of Architects, volunteers who tested the residential and commercial code concepts as frequent users of the code. We had a parklet on Willamette last summer that raised awareness about designing streets for pedestrians, and some of those pieces are still in place that are arriving by bike across the street from there. And then continued events into the autumn. As we progressed into writing the code, more than 13 -- sorry, 13 more meetings and events were held over the last year in addition to the Planning Commission's meetings. So that brings us to today, and now Robin's going to walk you through what the code does and how it works, and then we'll hear from Bill. There we go.
Great. Thank you, Terry. So before I dive into this, I'd just like to kind of let you know that we're going to be going into a little more detail than what we typically do in a council presentation, and I think that's important because we've been talking about these things literally for years, and the tools that we've been using to talk about them are primarily visual. And so this is the way that we have stepped through the conversation, I think, since really the very beginning, and it will be really helpful for you, I believe, to see that as well, and for other folks. So the concept plan established a vision for the area, and in general, the idea of area planning is to create a vision for a particular area so that when that development happens, it matches more closely what the community is expecting to see. It's been a long time, I think, since we've looked at our zoning in a lot of parts of town, and so when you talk about potential change in the future, I think it was a recognition on the part of the community that, yeah, we need to update how we look at that. So with that vision in place, which we went through very carefully, the idea behind the South Willamette Special Area Zone is to align the regulations with that vision because right now they're out of line. What could potentially be built out there today doesn't match what the community asked through the process to happen. So that's what this is all about. There's a few key design concepts that are included as part of this code, and I want to highlight a few of these. There's building types and heights, great streets, development transitions, design standards, housing diversity, parking strategies, and design review. Now, those are the main topics that when we asked the community, how do we balance this vision with whatever else may happen in the future out here? What are the things you want to see? These were the main categories. And so each one of these topics was a subject of a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission and, of course, a lot of discussion prior with the community, and a lot of figuring out how do we address these through a code. Three of these we're going to focus on mainly. One is building heights and types, one is great streets, and the final one is development transitions. So it's kind of a visual presentation, so some of the things you'll see happening on the screen behind you really help tell the story. For building types and heights, we'll start there. First of all, what is a special area zone? For folks who may be watching and for you all, a special area zone essentially replaces the existing zoning that's there today. Now, having said that, the South Willamette Special Area Zone carries forward a lot of the character and the scale of development, with a few exceptions that I'll point out to later that was there before. So essentially, the first question we asked the community after we'd asked a lot of questions about where is even the appropriate place to be looking here, is what type of building is appropriate, what type of use is appropriate, and where would that be appropriate? And so that resulted through the concept planning effort in this vision for the district. And so that essentially is translated directly into the code with a number of revisions based on conversations. Now, Terry was mentioning earlier, so this identifies areas of relative height change. So I know height is an important topic. It's come up quite a bit, so I'll walk you through this. It's a little hard to read this, so what I'm going to do is point out that there are increases and decreases across the district, and in terms of height change, so the change between what's existing and what's proposed in terms of a maximum. The center of the district, all this area you see here in the dark blue, this is a large decrease, so between a four- and a six-story decrease over what's currently allowed to be. In addition, there's a medium decrease, those areas that just floated in there, between a half a story and one and a half stories. And then there are large areas of the district where there is no change planned at all in terms of allowable height versus what's there today. So I'm going to start out by looking at that dark blue area in the middle there, which is primarily along Willamette Street, where we're looking at a potentially significant decrease in height. So this illustration here, a lot of people have said, "Well, you ought to just show what could potentially be built there today," and this theoretically is what you could build today. So C2 zoning that's in place along South Willamette Street allows 120-foot tall buildings, so that's, depending on how it's designed, between 10 and 12 stories high. Well, that's pretty high. It's also required to be built right up next to the existing nine-foot sidewalk, which is not very wide, and I'll get into that a little bit in just a minute. So when we asked the community and let people know, "Hey, this is what's allowed there today. What do you think is appropriate?" Eventually, and what the proposal is, it became clear that the 10 to 12 stories was not appropriate, that the five-story maximum is what folks wanted to see, so that's what the code is proposing. In addition, folks said, "We need to move those buildings back. Right up next to the nine-foot sidewalk is too close," and so it pushes each side of the street back 16 feet. In addition to that, folks said, "You know, five stories along the street is too high. It doesn't have that feel that we want for the district in the future. So let's drop that edge, boom, down to three stories along the street," and that's called a step back. And that step back is in place throughout the entire district. There is no building anywhere in the district that could be taller than three stories on the street, so if the height limit for the building, say, is five, it all has to have this configuration that I just showed you. So that does a number of things, and the first and most obvious thing that it does is it removes a significant amount of the entitlement for what can be built, for those buildings in those zones, and that's -- it's quite a bit, as you can see. However, it does the things that the community has asked it to do, which is protect views, reduce shading and open light, and lower the apparent height of buildings from the street, so clearly views would be much more apparent, light and shading. And if you're a person on the street and you're looking at these buildings even from across the street, the apparent height is much lower than it would be otherwise with that step back. So that's the intended plan. I'll come back to what happens on the street edge in just a minute. So looking at height change, so changes in height between existing and proposed maximums, let's look at where it has increased. So in some portions of the district, there is a small increase proposed, so in these areas, there would be a half a story increase in height, and part of that is to accommodate certain development types that the community is saying, "Hey, these might be appropriate areas to do that." A few small areas, so the ones that just flew in there in orange, do that again, those areas would have a medium increase of between two and two and a half stories. And there's one location right here where there's a proposed large increase between three and a half and four stories. And of course, a lot of the concern we've been hearing about height focuses, I would say, on this area, although it's not exclusively limited to that. A portion of this right here on the west end of that area is actually where the existing Cascade Manor building is that's already tall, and so that's part of why the height increase was proposed. What we heard from people in the community is, "Well, if you're lowering heights in so much of the district, there has to be a couple of areas where it would be appropriate to build a taller building," and so this is part of the balance that we were hearing between folks in the community. And they said, "Well, since there's already a tall building there, perhaps this would be an appropriate place," and so that's how that was carried forward through the concept. So let's look at this in a little bit different way. This is a cross-section through Willamette Street at 27th. I'll point out here, this is Willamette Street, so what we're just looking at with the large entitlements kind of shadowed in the back, that's Willamette Street. Over here is Oak Street, so this is slicing right through that district, and I'll just show you here what happens. So this is the existing entitlement right there. The blue line is the proposed, and to make it absolutely clear, these are the areas where the entitlements would be reduced. These are the areas where the entitlements would be increased. Looking at a different location, this is a cross-section through 29th Avenue, so these are currently all single-family residential areas. The entitlements here are shown in gray. Again, I'll click on that. So the existing entitlements run through like that. The proposed entitlements have a slight increase in height along 29th Avenue to accommodate multifamily housing. You'll notice that there's a slope setback here, and that is part of the transition requirement, which I'll explain to you a little bit further later on. So that would be the increase in height potential here. So now, finally, let's look at the area where the proposed heights would increase. So this is the one place where the height increases would be significant. The existing entitlements look like that. This is 29th Avenue. This is a cross-section as though we would be looking west. 29th here, it's really similar to Willamette Street in terms of what's allowed there today. So here's the proposed entitlement, so again, significantly decreasing the entitlements along the street there, but then adding these entitlements in partially where that existing building is and then partially next to that. So height change, I know the question has come up, "Well, what about the single-family residential, and where are we increasing -- well, where would the proposed code potentially increase heights, allowable heights in the R1 zone?" So these are those areas right here. What just flew in would be a half-story increase in allowed height in areas that are currently zoned R1. And you'll see along 29th Avenue here, that's the largest portion of that, and the thinking from the community around this is that eventually there will be a high-capacity transit station here with MX, and they're connecting that to the core of the South Willamette area. It made sense as an opportunity for multifamily housing. So there's a couple of other small areas that are flying in right here. You might not have seen that. I'll show you again. Those areas there would have a moderate increase of two to two and a half stories of maximum allowable height under the proposed code. So let's talk about great streets. When we looked at Willamette Street, we didn't really get into detail down here along what's going on on that street edge, but it's a very, very important thing to consider when you have a walkable community, when you want to create a walkable community. So this is what's out there today. Over here on the right, this is South Willamette Street. There's up to a nine-foot sidewalk. There's power poles and what have you in that, and then typically there's parking adjacent to that. What we heard very clearly and consistently is folks didn't think that this was conducive to a walkable community with thriving retail along the street for the future, and that's pretty obvious. People across the country would agree with that. So unfortunately, what can happen with the current condition of new development? New development actually be required to come up next to that nine-foot sidewalk. So, you know, this may seem a little draconian, but that is, in fact, what is allowed under the current code. And in fact, if you were to build a taller building, that is what would be required. So you essentially eliminate any possibility to have that walkable, livable space. So let's talk about what folks do want. What we heard is that along South Willamette Street, that character should be vibrant and livable. We had to be very careful to explain to folks, and it might not hurt to say that again here, is that at the time we were having all these conversations, of course, we were also talking about the street lanes themselves, the whole three-lane versus four-lane conversation. That was a separate conversation. We said what we're talking about here is actually what happens on the edge of the street. In terms of creating a walkable, livable place, that's where the action is. So any of the proposals we are discussing here with the code, they all work regardless of whether it's a three-lane street or a four-lane street. So let's zoom in a little bit and take a look at that street-side edge, as we call it. Looking at the elements that actually make a place livable and walkable, these are all here. They're quantifiable. It's things like what's happening with the building, on-street parking, landscaping, wide sidewalks, activity windows. All these things are very, very important to having a really livable place. And unfortunately, there simply isn't room -- our code, number one, doesn't allow for this. Number two, doesn't require some of the things that are needed, and I'll get into that in just a moment. And the main thing is, is there just isn't room along the street to do it. So what we did is go out and ask the community, "Hey, you said you want this. There isn't room. How would you like to handle that? We have a variety of options that we can approach." And so here you can see some different cross-sections, looking at the street-side edge. Do you want to do nothing? Just keep the existing street? Do you want to set it back a little bit? Set it back further? What we heard very clearly is, "Well, all those elements are important. Let's include those. We don't want to go too far and do something like what Downtown Bend is doing, but let's do something like this." So the question became, "How do you integrate that into code?" Well, this is a challenge that we have all over town. So when we look at our corridors all over town, we have the same rules for the C2 zone that would require buildings right up to that edge without really understanding what's needed on that edge to create a great place. And so this really solves that challenge. It's something that we've been wrestling with for years and years, and here's how you do it. You establish what's called a special setback, and this is simply a line where if the property owner decides at some point in the future to redevelop that property, that's where the building would have to go. Boom. So there's the space. You have it available to do what's needed in the future, and what the code allows is they allow the property owner at the time of development, if they choose, to construct that long-term vision for the street-side edge. And that's very, very important to have that flexibility. It doesn't exist anywhere else in our code because creating, for example, a retail space on the ground floor, each one of those on-street parking spaces is worth $250,000 a year, as we just heard, for a small business somewhere in the district. So essentially, you can think about one on-street parking space equalling one small business in terms of viability. So it's pretty important. And what the code does, in addition, so we looked at some of the elements that made a street-side realm really walkable and interesting for folks. The code today doesn't actually require a lot of those elements to be there. What this code does is actually specify, okay, there need to be street trees, here's the dimensions, and here's all the things you need to do. And then ultimately, down the road over time, South Willamette Street would be transformed into something more like this. So let's talk a little bit about transitions. Transitions essentially mean what happens between two different development types or two different buildings of significantly different scale, and typically, that's usually an R1, single-family residential home next to something larger, like, let's say, an apartment or a commercial building or something like that. So transitions have been discussed since the very beginning, and one of the main ways is by basically tapering the scale of development from the center of the district along South Willamette Street down to lower intensity uses towards the edge very gently, and that's exactly what some of those height changes and transitions are intended to do. Another way is, of course, when you have a back fence or a side fence between, say, a single-family home and a more intensive use, what are some of the things you can do? And we asked the question, "What are some of the things that would help if you're the owner of a home that would make that transition better for you?" And what we heard is barriers and landscaping, trees, lowering that height, having some kind of a slope setback, encouraging a buffer, and doing those sorts of things. So those are all included. I'll show you that in just a second. The other thing you can do is include a different building type as a transition. So currently in the code, you have commercial buildings right next to single-family homes. The proposed code would allow other types like row house, which is kind of an intermediate development type, and that would be a bridge between those more intense uses. So looking at transitions under current code, what we have, and this is just an example of what the R2 zone allows, you have a five-foot setback here and a 35-foot height limit, and there really isn't anything required in terms of building articulation or screening, that sort of thing. So here's what the proposed code would do. For all uses, any use, doesn't matter what it is, next to a single-family home or the SFO sub-district, this is what you'd have to do. You push that setback another five feet back, so you double it, and then you drop that height and limit it to a 25-foot maximum at that setback line. So essentially, there's another portion of entitlement that is removed to reduce the mass and size of that building next door. And so the next thing, of course, is the dormers are limited. There were conversations about that. Getting into more detail, folks said, "You know, trees would really help." So a requirement for trees of a certain mature height and a certain spacing along that edge is also part of the recommendation, and there was also discussion about balconies. People said, "We don't want those too close, so is there an opportunity to set those back?" And yes, there is, and that's also part of the proposed code. There's also a few other things that the transition does, but those are the highlights. So let's talk about design standards and options here for a moment. There was a lot of conversation as we looked at the street-side edge and identified the things that really make that work. We also looked at commercial areas, multifamily areas, to see what are the elements of a building design that actually make that work. So there are special standards for each sub-district. Here's just an example of some of the graphics we used to have these conversations. This is a proposed standard that says where the building has to be relative to the sidewalk, how much you can set it back. how much you can set it back, the position of that on the street is very important, all that is handled in the code. Here's another example. In terms of what actually has to be done around entrances, what makes a great entrance, and how can we build that into the code, these are some elements of options for how to do that. I'd like to also point out, I hadn't mentioned this earlier, but there's been a lot of discussion around capstone. And, you know, capstone does a lot of things, of course, it brings a lot of people downtown. I think people have noted some of the failures of design in that project, and a lot of the things that I just mentioned, both the step-back at three stories, pushing that building back from the street to give you enough room to do what's needed on the sidewalk, and some of these design requirements for the building would really make that a much different place. One of the things that I'm not showing you here, but I'll just tell you about, is that the code actually does require higher-quality materials. So I think the materials and the construction on that building are something people have noted, this code would prevent against that. So housing diversity, this topic came up, actually, it's rooted in the early conversations of Envision Eugene, where folks said, you know, the demographics are changing, folks are getting older, we have a lot of millennials coming up who are looking for different housing types, they have different ability to afford housing. There are more single-family households than there have been, or not single-family, but single-person households than there have been before. So it's not just Eugene, all across the country, demographics and the need for different housing types is changing. Now in Eugene, we have a lot of single-family homes, and we also have a lot of kind of older apartments. What we don't have are these in-between housing types. And these are things like row houses, courtyard homes, cluster cottages, those sorts of things. And they're very difficult to do under the current code, and part of the thinking around the early Envision Eugene's discussions, and what we also heard from the community through this process is, well, how can we enable those things to happen and still have high enough standards to make sure that they're done right and they fit in with the neighborhood? And that's exactly what the code does. So it looks at row houses, courtyards, and these other single-family, what we call single-family options, development types, where the height is either the same or lower than the R1 standard. And there are also a variety of considerations that are built into the code around siting, relationship to the street, open spaces, landscaping to access, parking, scale, materials, all those things. It goes much farther beyond anything that our code has currently. Other communities have done this as well, and we've studied those projects and basically taken the best and adapted it. So parking, this question comes up a lot, we hear a lot about folks, a lot from folks about concerns about what happens in the future when there are more projects and more people living in the area. Well, part of the solution is built into that street-side edge, as I mentioned. If you look at South Willamette Street, there's actually an estimated capacity for about 237 spaces, give or take, along the street. So over time, as the street transforms, having that public on-street parking is almost the equivalent of the Pearl Street garage in terms of capacity, so that helps. In addition, minimum requirements similar to other special area zones also apply in this district. You'll note that downtown has no minimum parking requirements. People certainly didn't say that this is a downtown-like place, it's different than downtown. It's going to take longer to transform into something, many, many years. So in the interim, certainly have said there do need to be some basic parking requirements in place. So those are there. In addition to that, we've had a lot of conversations with Jeff Petrie, our parking manager, about what can we do proactively in terms of a district plan moving forward? So that as development occurs in district over time, how can we get in front of that and do things like city-owned lot, and eventually, and this is probably way down the road, some kind of a parking garage or something like that. So finally, a design review, a lot of folks have asked about this. So a design review is a way to sort of have a more subjective conversation about what a project looks like. And we can do that through the MPT process if you're making certain investments. Otherwise, state law in Oregon does not allow you to have a discretionary process if there's housing involved. So we cannot require design review for a project that has housing included in it. So what we do is we have to provide really good, clear, and objective standards, and that's what the code does, that's what places like Portland are realizing that they have to do as well. Portland is the only city in the entire state that has the ability to require design review for housing projects, and they had to go to the state legislature to get that. Nobody else has been successful doing that since then. So what design review is here is an alternative path for approval process. And that means, well, if you want greater flexibility and design freedom to do something, you can go through that process and work through that. It's similar to the current process, except it has much, much more clear and rigorous standards that go along with it than the current code does. And it also has a minimum requirement that you should achieve equivalent or better quality design through the design review process than if you just followed a clear and objective code. So I know that was a lot to take in, so that's condensing a lot of years of work into a very short period of time, but I just wanted to share some of the facts with you and some of the thinking behind it. So with that, I will turn it over to Teri.
We're almost done. Just to bring you back to where this code is in the process, we're in the formal code adoption process, having begun the planning commission component earlier this year, and just now bringing it to the council to begin your conversation and consideration. Next steps would include additional community events, yet to be designed and scheduled in advance of a hearing that you would have after the beginning of the year. And then the process moves into an opportunity for the council to ask questions of staff, respond to the testimony that you've heard, and provide direction to us on what you'd like to see come back to you for action. So there are a number of steps in the council process itself. This is just a quick summary of the things that have been out in the media and that you've been hearing at forum, and I'm following this slide with a map that'll hopefully help with your discussion about different areas. First of all, we have heard a lot of support for the Willamette Street setbacks, height and design standards that Robin went over, and a lot of support for the benefits that the plan can bring in terms of fixing the Applebee's problem, which is really that setback problem along the street, that's the Applebee's on West 11th, and the capstone problem with a similar, right-up-to-the-sidewalk tall building and lack of design standards. In addition, another benefit that's often commented on is the addition of these smaller housing types as transition areas between the corridor and adjacent neighborhoods. The areas that continue to have concerns include Portland Street, the one that Robin showed you on the map, East 23rd Avenue, which is at the northern end of the area, and then the southern end of Willamette Street, from 30th to 32nd. And so I've put some red boxes around those areas, so you can just see where they are up here and how they play out on this building height change map. There we go, and then down here. So as far as the planning commission process, Bill's here to talk to you just a little bit about what was involved and what you came up with.
Thank you, Teri and Robin, is this on? Okay. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. As you know, the planning commission and hundreds of community members have spent a significant amount of time over the last five years developing and reviewing the South Willamette Plan, the goals that we as an entire community are trying to achieve, and how this plan can make South Willamette an even more vibrant, livable neighborhood as we meet those goals. Along with the time many have spent developing and reviewing the plan, that included an unprecedented 25 public work sessions, we as a commission have also listened to and heard the community's input. With an interested parties list of 650 people, and through almost 50 open houses, public meetings, and a public hearing, we believe we have balanced the community's input with the goals of the plan and come to a well-crafted solution. A solution that will not only make the South Willamette area better in the years to come, but will fix some of the longstanding problems inherent in our current code that Robin and Teri have mentioned to you earlier, and that the city's been asked to fix for years. With the adjustments that address building heights, transitions between uses, and providing the option for smaller, affordable housing types, in addition to single-family detached homes, the South Willamette Plan protects adjacent neighborhoods while still welcoming new residents and businesses into the area over time to meet our long-term goals as a community. And even with all of this, we as a commission heard a lot of public input and still continued to modify and revise some of the recommendations in response to neighbors' concerns in ways we feel will make the plan even better. Those revisions are summarized in your packets, outlining each one and our recommended change, as well as some of the details we grappled with. Ultimately, the planning commission is bringing the South Willamette Plan to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval. I also believe the commission shares council's goals of finding solutions that make the Envision Eugene strategies work. We all want a more livable, vibrant community, and to achieve that, we have to adapt and adjust. This is truly a neighborhood plan tailored to the South Willamette area. It doesn't make wholesale changes, but puts in place the framework to help us as a community achieve our goals, set out in the Envision Eugene pillars, from economic opportunities to housing affordability, including compact development, efficient transportation, and neighborhood livability. As a commission, we feel this is a good plan, and it is worthy of moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for discussion?
Yes.
So I have Mike, Alan, Betty, and Greg in the queue, I'm looking around to see if there's anybody else, Claire. Okay, and I just want to start--
George.
I just want to thank everyone for this effort, for all the community members who've been involved in the staff work and the planning commission's deep dive, as we call it, into this issue. We all appreciate it, and we know that there's still some unresolved issues and a desire for the win-win. So I appreciate that we're going to put off the public hearing to allow for more of that conversation to continue. So thank you all for that. And Mike, your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to say thank you to staff and to the planning commission members, this is a great deal of work, and a lot of this is very good, a lot of this is very, very good, and I appreciate the fact that everybody has done their job, there's roles for everybody in this process, and you all have done yours exceptionally. The council's job is to say, hey, we want the staff to go and give us innovative ideas, and the very latest thinking about the best way to do this, this job that we have to do. But it's also our job, at the end of the day, to make sure that we're the ones who decide and adjust the final plans to the community's sensibilities, and that's our job, we have to do that. And I know as a part of the planning commission's work, they did yeoman's work to try and sift through all of these and adjust them as well. But it's my sentiment that, I'm not sure, because I know, having spoken to John Jaworski, that I'm not sure the council has ever given the planning commission adequate sorts of ideas around what we think it's important to protect as a council, what's the council's sentiment about R1 and how to mitigate impacts, and what we think is important when you're evaluating that work. And that may be our failing, and so that's the job I think we need to do. But more than anything else, I think that it's the council's job to take all of these pieces, system, and make them the final product that everybody can live with. And I think first and foremost, we ought to say loudly and clearly that this council is going to protect the livability of people's homes. Now, they're not protecting it from staff, that's doing exactly what we asked them to do, and that's great. And it's now our job to make sure to bring those things to bear, so I have a motion on that regard, and if I have a second, I'll speak to it. I move to direct the city manager to reschedule the public hearing on the South Willamette Special Area Zone to January 19th, 2016. Number two, to engage the affected neighbors and property owners and bring back revised zoning and plan amendments for public hearing on January 19th. That will accomplish the following: A, does not change the plan designation or rezone any property currently zoned R1 or immediately adjacent to a property zoned R1 unless none of the adjacent properties have an existing single-family home or duplex, and the owner agrees to the rezoning. B, ensures that use and development standards for all properties that are not zoned R1 will protect R1 property residents' livability, including Sub-I, protecting residents' visual privacy in their homes and backyards, especially from significant intrusion from occupants of structures that are two or more stories. And, Sub-Two, protecting residents from significant negative impacts from structures that block solar access and reasonable sightlines. And, Sub-Three, protecting residents from significant negative impacts arising from vehicle use and loading. And then finally, Three, larger direction to the staff and to the manager, follow the direction above with respect to all future planning and proposals for the new comprehensive plan, code and plan amendments on previous identified transit corridors that may impact R1 properties.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you. This is a series of pieces that say this council wants to protect R1 in the following ways. We think that people's livability in their homes deserves special protection in these ways, and perhaps others, but for now, we want to make sure that the code that comes back says these are the filters that, through which we think is an appropriate special zone. And then secondarily, gives that to any future plans and says, this is the filter that the planning commission should be using appropriately from this council to protect R1 livability standards in our community. So I hope my colleagues can support that, it gives us a date specific for the hearings so that we do this in a timely way, and it doesn't hold up the rest of our work with regard to Envision Eugene.
I think you're way over time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so been moved and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, yes?
On this amendment, yes. Well, I totally, wholeheartedly support this motion. This is a fundamental baseline requirement, it sets a real clear standard, actually for all of Eugene, not just South Willamette. Staff will be selecting, there's other sub-areas that will be selected for redevelopment through time along major corridors, and that would be in Midtown, two or three blocks each side of Willamette down there. Whittaker, Central Eugene via Sixth and Seventh Street, that's a major corridor, three or four blocks on either side of those, that pushes us from 10th down to Fourth Avenue, that's a huge area. Coburg Road, both sides of Coburg Road, back into established neighborhoods, there will be a new plan. River Road, same thing, and north of Franklin. So I feel that it's not just for this area, but it's going to set us the standard for all of Eugene and all future expansion areas, and the primary rule here is first, do no harm, just like a doctor, don't do any harm to older, established neighborhoods. Don't set the trigger for getting rid of single-family homes, the ones that are in this zone are affordable to working families now, they will be replaced with very expensive apartments and condos, not single-family homes. It's not that the neighbors are opposed to any type of development at all or redevelopment, they are not. Many of them have already constructed cottages in their backyard using current code. There are some cottage developments, using current code, using planned unit developments that the process, we already have that. We can increase the density in this zone modestly, but this is basically a wrecking ball, that's the stage for a wrecking ball, and I believe could easily lead to, through time, lead to a Western University-type of environment where the single-family homes are gone and there's lots of apartments that are a lot more expensive than existing housing. I think this plan is really, especially with all the row house zones, I think it's more appropriate for a newer development area rather than an older, established neighborhood. And really, why wouldn't we want to protect the livability of single-family residences? Because they exist in every single neighborhood. I mean, the opposition that we're seeing now will just be repeated in every single zone if we don't set a clear standard for the manager and staff of how we want this development and redevelopment to proceed. I'll probably need another round.
George Polley.
Thank you. You know, I tend to agree with what Mike is aiming at here, and it is about protecting the uniqueness of the established or older neighborhoods along these corridors. protecting the uniqueness of the established or older neighborhoods along these corridors. I'm not going to try to predict what or when development will occur. What I want to just make sure is that there's some sort of protection in place for these older neighborhoods that are already there. You know, the one part of the motion, the last part, you know, that is, that's the crux of it, and that's to make sure that the future corridor developments do protect the uniqueness. I also like the January 19th, 2016 time certain, because we have a tendency to drag things out and drag things out, and this way, it brings us back in a reasonable amount of time. And like, you know, the city manager said during his opening comments, he was willing to postpone it until after the first of the year. He didn't give a time certain date on it, so I do like this, this time certain part of it. So I think I'm going to support this motion. I like what it was intended to do, and I think it's a good move based on all the work that staff did, and like Mike said, I think you've done a phenomenal job. I think the Planning Commission did a phenomenal job, but I also think that the neighbors, neighbors that live in the area, you know, kind of got together on this, and they presented us with just probably as much, if not more, information than staff and the Planning Commission has. And that's what our job is to do, is filter through all of this. And I think Mike said it right also, is at the very onset of this, I don't think the direction was clear enough from the Council as to what the final outcome, what we wanted the final outcome to look like, or we thought it should look like.
I just want to be clear that in the original lineup of people signed up for the original discussion, I had Alan and Betty and Greg and Claire and George Brown, and then in this discussion, which is on a motion, I had George, and then I have Alan and Betty and Chris. Okay, so Alan.
Sure. I'm, having just seen this and had no time to read it, I'm not prepared to vote on a motion that I just saw. I think it needs a work session on it, and if that were called to discuss these changes and what their impacts are and understand them better, I might be willing to go there. But having just read something and without, this is very complicated, I thought we already had decided to reschedule the public hearing for after the first of the year, and the first natural day was that, so that doesn't bother me. As far as the presentation goes, very clear, awesome graphics helps explain it. Really appreciate the work of the Planning Commission and the folks that are here from the Planning Commission, and also really appreciate the work of the neighbors. Having lived in the Fairmont neighborhood, I've done my own battles in that neighborhood with development issues around the university, especially regarding the south of the university on 19th, and also the Joe Romania lot, which are adjacent to R1. And some of the lessons learned from those battles are actually incorporated here, and that's where those setbacks and the stepped-up heights actually come from. So I've lived through that, so I very much appreciate all of that stuff and understand the concern about the value and the livability of your house, because I've gone through that myself, having been in the Walnut Node area several years ago. So I've also attended several meetings, especially the one at Good Samaritan, listened to a lot of people, talked to staff about this, and I know that we did a lot more than what's legally required in terms of notice and things like that, but that doesn't seem to cut it, so I think we need to come back and talk about that issue as well. I think parts of the plan are very good and parts of it need adjustment. I think the Willamette corridor part, reduction in heights and the step setbacks from the lessons learned from the Fairmont neighborhood are really good. I haven't heard anybody talk about that issue, about keeping them at 120 feet, 11 stories, and moving it down to five is a good idea. Does that compact urban development, 20-minute neighborhoods, and sustainability and transportation issues? I think there's a couple of areas that need to be adjusted here. For instance, the Portland Street area, south of 29th Place, that little section there, at this point, I suggest just taking it out of the plan, just redraw the line around it, so it's not in the plan anymore. The second one I would think would need to be adjusted is Willamette Street, south of 30th, reducing those heights back down to three stories are two things that I would like to see happen. There are four areas I think we need to talk about. That's the 23rd area east of Willamette, 29th east of Willamette, 27th, right at the Amazon Parkway, where there's going to be an MX station, so that's an interesting topic. And then Oak Street between 24th and 26th, there's a height adjustment. So every place that had significant increases in height, I think we should talk about them individually. And then, while we go back to it, I still have another more general one of the capstone setbacks that I wanted to talk about.
Betty?
Thank you. The main thing I had asked for was postponement, to give the neighbors more time to tell us, to tell us what they think we should do, but I, and I'm not sure whether this is all about the motion or not, or whether anyone else's comments are even.
This is about the motion.
I think some of them have been, I think because this, we currently have a vibrant, livable neighborhood there, that it's important to protect that, and I will speak more later. The motion, I have no objections to any of the emotion, any part of the motion. I did think that maybe we should wait longer to give people more time, but I'm okay with that. And I will support the motion, but I could tell some reasons why later.
Chris.
Thank you. We, through the course of this conversation, my sense is, have kind of talked about, oh, you know, we need to stop, step back, take a minute to kind of reflect and rethink about what we've been doing. There's a lot of good work here, but we do need to kind of slow down. That's what I heard at the very beginning. Reschedule the public hearing, step back, think about what's here, in some areas and not in others, which I'm very comfortable with. I think it's maybe a good idea for something this big to kind of slow down, step back, reflect, look at consequences and things that happen, and then say, yeah, but, I want to do something right away, right now, and I've got some specific proposals here that I want to see right now. And I go, well, I want to know what the consequences of these are, because I look at this and I see some stuff that on the surface, I may wind up ultimately thinking this is a good idea, once I know what the consequences would be. Because these things, A, B, and the sub-particles under here, aren't just for the South Willamette Special Area Zone. The way I read this, this affects the entire city of Eugene. And so if you vote to approve these, you're not just voting something for the South Willamette Special Area Zone, you're voting for something that could be put in place around the entire city of Eugene. And I haven't studied the consequences of that to know whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. And I'm not saying right now that it's a good idea or a bad idea. I don't know. And my general position is, if I don't have an answer, then the answer is no. And so I may come to support this, and I may come to support this wholeheartedly, but I don't want to vote on something that's going to affect the entire city of Eugene without having had a little more time to think about it. And that seems to be the conversation we've been having so far, is let's step back from the brink on this South Willamette Special Area Zone, which I think is actually a good idea. Whether it needs to be January 19th or some date close to that is fine. If we wanted to make a motion to make it January 19th, okay, that's fine. But I'm not prepared to vote on something that theoretically would impact the entire city from this point forward without having had a chance to kind of reflect on it a little more. So I'm going to hang on to this. I'm going to hang on to it. It may be a good thing to revisit as we go through this, but wow, I just can't do it today.
Claire.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have general comments that I'll save for when we get back to regular rounds, but speaking to the motion, I also appreciate the values embedded in Councilor Clark's motion. But like Councilor Pryor, you know, I might end up supporting those proposed changes, but right now, I don't support this motion without additional input from staff about how these amendments would impact the goals of the draft plan and give staff a chance to respond to the specific concerns about privacy protection and other potential negative impacts, and how those are currently being addressed in the proposed zoning changes. You know, there's been a tremendous amount of work put into this, and when something comes before us with a unanimous endorsement from the Planning Commission, you know, I think that speaks to the thorough review that's done. That being said, I am actually also fine with postponing and looking at some very specific adjustments that might be made to address the very specific concerns that we've heard from folks that I think are very reasonable, and I would support those, but not necessarily a broad change in the plan, which is what I feel this motion represents right now.
So I have second round, George Brown and George Poling, but before that, my comment is this, that I'm glad we're going to take more time. I think it's important, I'm going to go out and visit the neighborhood, and I want to have more discussion about this. In the past, we have had the experience of having a whole thing set in front of us to say, pass it, don't talk about it, pass it. That's what this feels like. I'm more than willing to be part of this discussion. I think this is worth talking about, but I don't think we've had a chance to talk about it in any depth, or look at it in any depth, or get responses in any depth, so I could not, could not support it, because I just feel like we just went through something where we had made a whole range of changes, and now we're just finding out the implications of them and revisiting some of those. So I want to be sure that we're doing this in a way that makes sense. Yes?
Just one piece for your consideration. New public hearing date of January 19th will only work if you're going to have a public hearing on the existing draft of the ordinance. You have to remember, in order to have a public hearing on an ordinance, we have to post notice under the charter so many days before. Basically, we would have to have the revised ordinance done by the end of December. Attachment A is sort of the ordinance that you have. It's 80 pages long. If there's any kinds of changes that come out of this review, we can't do that in a matter of a week or two. So if you want to have a public hearing on the existing version, you could certainly do that on January 19th. If you want to have a public hearing on a revised version based on the input and what this motion references, I can't give you that date at this point, but I can tell you it can't be January 19th.
All right, and so we'll go George Brown, and then George Poling, and then Mike, and then we're going to vote on this motion. George Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. What this motion does, it does not reject the whole plan that we just had a presentation of. Doesn't reject that. It doesn't do that at all. In fact, some of the elements are fine and should be moved forward, especially setbacks on Willamette Street. I'd just like to point out, currently, we keep hearing about the 10-story buildings on Willamette. My understanding that a C2, commercial zone that fronts on R1, single-family homes, can't be higher than 30 feet, a new building, if it's 50 feet from a R1 zone. So also, the market for, the current market for 10-story office buildings, I would say is pretty weak in Eugene right now. I don't really see any 10-story buildings going along Willamette anytime soon. But no, there are certain elements that should be kept, and this motion does not affect that at all. In fact, you know, that would be part of the ongoing discussion. What this does is shows our commitment for protecting older, established neighborhoods where working families can actually afford to own a home and raise their kids and, you know, live in a great neighborhood. So that's what this does, and it would apply to future developments, too. And for the life of me, I can't see anything wrong with that. I think this is what the Council should be doing. It's one of the pillars of Eugene, protecting neighborhood livability. That's what this does, so I fully support it. Thank you.
George Poling.
Thank you. To me, the way I look at this motion, and Mike may have some comments to maybe address to what Glenn Klein just said. I don't know for sure, but to me, the way I look at this, this is a process, or this is to start a process to address what we've heard, and also, Chris, I think it's to get some information during this time period that may answer some of the questions that you have. You know, some of that information will come back as specific to this motion. You know, the work that's already been done is great work. It doesn't have to be thrown completely out. I think this is a chance for us to combine what's been done with the suggestions that are being made in this motion to come up with even a better plan. And, you know, the email did come out last night at 5:08 PM, which is a lot more notice than we've gotten in the past on a number of times where we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on land acquisitions, canceled major transportation projects, and other things with even less notice than this. So, you know, I think based on the fluidity of this issue and the number of emails and letters and documents from staff and Planning Commission, I don't think it's being an issue that's being rushed to us at the last moment.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor.
City manager, excuse me. I'm going to introduce you.
I can do it after, it doesn't matter.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to address this properly with Glenn here. I don't want to debate the city attorney on that. I think that's for us to do, but I do want to address your comment. I think that, unless I misunderstand, we have a 45-day notice requirement, right, for the DLCD?
Yeah, I'm not talking about the DLCD requirement. I'm talking about the time I need and people in my office need to go back through 80 pages of ordinance and try to make it consistent with whatever comes out of the conversations that your motion handles. And so it's.
I appreciate that. What we have between January 19th and today is 90 days, so I think it's more than probably, as you mentioned, a week, and I recognize and appreciate that it will be challenging, and it may be challenging. But I think it's the right way for us to go, because one of the things we tend to do is stretch out, as George said, things too long in the process, and it may be challenging. But I think you're up to it. I do. This has a very simple sort of idea to it, and I can't imagine it being overly complex to put into ordinance, that we will simply protect established neighborhoods and the livability of people's homes when it comes to R1. And I just, it's a very basic standard, and I, like George, don't understand what the challenge behind that notion could be, where the fear comes from, from the idea that we're going to state real clearly, we protect the livability of people's homes here, and this is what it means, so that everybody's on the same page and everybody understands how we do that. So I hope I have the support of my colleagues on this. Thank you.
John.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the intent of Mike's motion with the Council providing direction. I do have some concerns with the specific. January 19th, we probably won't make it, so I appreciate that. I do think it's important for the Council to understand potential impacts of what this is. It's not just about South Willamette, it's about a broader, the entire community, and it may be absolutely just the right place. My suspicion is, is there are currently R1 zones right next to commercial districts along corridors. One of the issues we've had, and we saw it in the university neighborhoods, is that there's no transition area. And so if you have commercial right next to R1, it really makes it difficult to have a transition zone, because you go from multi-story right down to single-family. So I understand that. So that's a potential concern. One is, one of the emphasis in Envision Eugene is 20-minute neighborhoods. This may have an impact on 20-minute neighborhoods, so we probably want to at least spend a little bit of time looking at that. I don't know how this will impact the viability of transit corridors. It might make a difference, or it may not. So while I understand the intent of this, and I'm not arguing whether these are good provisions or not, my suggestion is, is that we at least have some time to take a look at what the impacts will be and be able to provide some of that, not only for this project, but it is a broader amount of impact, which is partly why I think it's harder to just come back on January 19th with just a very specific change, three words in the ordinance. If it were just a three-word change code in the ordinance, yes, but I don't think that's what that is. I do think it's important to include the Planning Commission on these kinds of conversations, so if we're making a pretty significant change, I think it's respectful to at least ask them to weigh in on that conversation as well, so.
So before we vote, Mike, I have a question to ask you.
Okay.
Content aside, it's whether you feel like we need to pass it today, or can we give ourselves, can you give the Council a chance to, have a chance to think about it, spend some time on it, hear about it, and then come back and address this? And that way, we may all be able to get in the same place. If you feel like, I understand, if you feel like it has to be done today, okay. If you feel like, I understand, if you feel like it has to be done today, okay, but I'm just suggesting that you might find much more support if you give us a little time to digest this and figure out how we all feel about it.
In answer, Mayor, I would say, I absolutely understand the impulse to do that, and I think it's the wise one, which is why this simply says, this is how we, this is the direction we want you to go when you come back for a public hearing. We still have a public hearing on whatever that change will be. We'll probably make more changes before it gets to final authorization, which will also probably have more changes. So we have plenty of opportunity between now and final passage in order to make adjustments. But what I don't want to do is delay the process inevitably. So I want us to start in the direction where we've stated that our clear intent is to protect the livability of single-family homes. So that's why I really want to vote on this today.
I think I can say with some confidence, we all feel that way.
Excellent.
Okay, we're ready to vote on this? All? Oh, did I? No, I didn't. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, I had my hand up for being in the queue.
But I'm going to go ahead and vote. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in opposition. One, two, three, it passes.
Mayor, what I'll say is, I still don't think we'll make January 19th on the public hearing, so I appreciate the direction. I'm just foreshadowing that.
Okay. All right, then. We're back to, let's see, where does that leave us with the, we're back to the main discussion?
I think we're done.
Are we done? But if people have other things they want to talk about around the main thing, and I have Alan in the queue, and Betty, and Greg, and Claire, and George Brown. So, Alan.
I have a question for the city manager with regard to some of this. This language is very broad, and leaves a lot of interpretation, and I'm wondering if you've got clear enough direction to come back. I think in 80-page code, this actually does require you to go back and revise the plan and the code, and come back with a different one based on these specific things. And I'm wondering, and then also, it applies to every planning, to quote, "all future planning and proposals for comprehensive plans." I'm wondering if you have enough direction to be able to come back to us and clarity about this, because this is, I think, really broad language. I think some of these are great, you know, privacy, visual privacy, and protecting R1 next to R4. I went through that in my neighborhood big time, and solar access rights, and all these other kinds of things are all good. I just don't know if you have enough clarity to be able to move forward and come back with something.
I guess I don't know yet. We haven't had a chance to talk about it, so I will spend some time on that, and then get back with the council on that.
Betty.
Thank you. I think these, I approve of these ideas. I think it will take more time. I thought all the time that we needed to have more time. Until January is good, but we need more time than that, in my opinion, to let the neighbors formulate what they think we should do, and us to consider their ideas. I wonder how we ever got from, I thought originally we were talking about 24th to 29th on Willamette, and suddenly it got expanded. And I think we should consider eliminating those places where it got expanded, like 23rd Street. And I wanted to say that the fact that Cascade Manners is already interfering with people's livability doesn't mean that we should let more people around that same area interfere. It's like saying that person has a messy yard, so I can have one, too. It's all the more reason to protect what's left if something has already interfered. I'm really concerned about, I like what says in this motion about livability. I think that's really important, that we protect the people who are already here. Some people, someone once said, "You care more about the people who are already here than the ones who are coming." Well, certainly I do. That's the ones we should be protecting. And also, I don't like it when people call people nimby's. I think we all have things that we don't want. There are things we say, "Not in my house, you don't cuss in my house," or "You don't wear shoes," or whatever it is you have, "And not on my block." We're not going to have garbage in the streets, and not in my city. We're not going to discriminate. We all have standards of things we don't want, and people really have the right to protect their own neighborhoods, and to say, "Not in my backyard, and not on my street, and you're not going to destroy my neighborhood that I love." So I think we really need to respect that. I think we need to discuss each part of what is in this motion, but there are other things we need to discuss also. Thank you.
Greg.
I'll pass, Mayor.
Okay, Claire.
Thank you. So I just wanted to speak more in general to the briefing and the plan. I really appreciate the thorough briefing. This is really our first opportunity as a council to discuss this plan, so the level of detail is appropriate. Obviously, there's more discussion to happen. I also want to express my appreciation to the many community members and the Planning Commission members who have worked so hard to develop this plan. And then I recognize, you know, this is a pilot for use in other parts of the city, so I'm definitely looking at it through that lens for how it might affect corridors in my ward. So a few specific things. I really like the setbacks of buildings from the sidewalk. This is a very important element to creating space for pedestrians and provide comfortable spaces for walking between all the businesses along the corridor, so local residents can walk from their house and shop. This is a clear contrast to what was required when Capstone was built downtown, where they were required to build right up to the sidewalk. The issue of building height will be one that we'll need to look at for other places as we develop more multifamily homes along River Road, for example. So we will need good protections between existing homes, and provide setbacks and protections and step downs of the other strategies that were mentioned, to help make those potentially newer, higher buildings compatible with current neighborhoods. And then I also really like the allowing for a diversity of building types. The row houses, the courtyard developments, and the others that were mentioned, I think those will be very positive additions to our housing mix, a mix of affordability, price ranges, and especially where we do have long-established, single-family houses. I think those kinds of building types really help with blending in to the character of existing neighborhoods in a way that a multi-story apartment complex isn't going to be as readily able to. And then I, you know, I have a lot of thoughts about various things my fellow counselors have said about these plans and protecting current neighbors. And I just think it's important for us to recognize that this council is not seeking growth on Willamette, or anywhere else in this community, but growth will occur whether or not we have a plan to deal with it. And I think this kind of planning is the way we protect our current neighborhoods. It's not prioritizing future residents over current residents. It's making sure that current neighborhoods are in a position to deal with the growth that's going to happen, whether we do anything about it or not.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions of staff. I had heard, but I've not been able to find any document, but I had heard that staff suggested that as many as 12,000 new residents could be accommodated by all of these changes, if that was, you know, if it was fully implemented, or is that just urban legend? I seem to remember that.
Yeah, that's urban legend.
Urban legend.
12,000?
Yes.
No.
Thank you. I, one thing that is missing from all, you know, from the 85-page document is, I really think we need to see a traffic impact study. And, oh, I have another question. Currently, if someone were to build an apartment house in this zone, in an R3, is the parking requirement 1.5 spaces per unit? Is that correct?
The proposal, you're talking about the current?
No, is it current? Current.
Anyone have an answer for that? Currently? 1.5? Are you sure?
That's the current requirement, or the, I know it's the proposed, it's proposed in the document.
Proposed is 1.5 per unit. Yeah, currently, it's currently it's one.
It's one, yeah, okay. Well, I personally see a really big-time problem with that. But anyway, I think we need more of a traffic impact, some indication of what's going to happen when however many new residents move in, and where everyone's going to park. And I really, you know, we're enabling the removal of single-family homes, and what's being built now, pretty much all over town, except occasionally 100 units a year of affordable units, most people in town are rent burdened, over 50% of the people. I'd like to see some kind of affordability study of what the ranges might be for the new, any new developments, because I just think it would be senseless to get rid of affordable homes and replace them with market rate. And the market rate's pretty high right now, so that's my suggestion. That's what I'd like to see, some kind of affordability study, parking analysis, where is everyone going to park, and what's the traffic increase going to be? Because we know Willamette's not going to be increasing lanes. It's, and that's very important, too. And yes, Willamette is a 20-minute neighborhood now. It already is. It's like one of the coolest, most active neighborhoods in all of town, and we've got to proceed with this very, very carefully and not mess it up, because it's, other than the traffic problem, the traffic flow problem, it's one of the, it's working really well right now, and people are thrilled to live there and visit and shop there, too. So we just have to proceed very carefully with a scalpel and not a rucking ball. Thank you.
I just want to remember that one of the, oops, go ahead, Greg.
This is going back to one of the things that I was writing notes on before, and George brought it up. So specifically, or in general, specifically, how many residents are we looking to accommodate on this corridor down the line, based on our 35,000 growth projection over, you know?
Yeah, that's a great question. So-
And how many units are we really looking at adding in that corridor?
So I'll answer that in a couple of different ways. First, if nothing changes, so if you adopted the code just the way it is proposed, that doesn't really trigger redevelopment. What triggers redevelopment is the economics of it. So there really isn't any vacant, or partially vacant, land in the district right now, so any new units you get would have to be through redevelopment. So right now, all else being equal, you'd maybe see up to 60 units in the district over the next 20 years. Now, if you did some kind of interventions like MPT in the district, it would be 250 units that we would estimate over 20 years in the district.
So that's quite a range.
Yeah. Well, yeah, 60 to 250. Yeah, neither one of which-
Depending on how many people you're, you know, looking at.
So overall, throughout the city, you'd be looking at 1,500 units that we're trying to accomplish through some kind of redevelopment, and so the portion for South Willamette would be about 250.
Good. Answers my question.
So I want to reflect on this for a minute, and the January 19th date of the motion that was passed, I don't know whether we can hit that or not. What does bother me is some things in here that are about permission that has to be given, some very specific things. I'm totally on board with the visual, protecting visual privacy, protecting residents from significant impacts from structures that block solar, protecting residents from significant impacts arising from vehicle use, and all those things that we take into consideration when we're looking at how to do our planning. There's some prescriptive things here that are troubling to me, and I just want to let you know that I'm going to be seriously thinking about how I'm going to respond to this. Just putting that out there. Okay. Thank you.